I don't know, and we're there, we're live, okay. It was just that easy. You have to give her a hard time though. So, alright, well, welcome online, we're gonna wait just a few minutes before we start. And glad to, that y'all are here with us. There comes Tom. So, uh, we'll begin. And David, um, I'm gonna ask you, if you don't mind to, if you can get on the Facebook Live.
Just to see if it's showing up?
Yeah, and, and we're gonna, we'll check the audio, our audio was a little goofy last time. Okay, and then if you can put it on mute and just kinda look for any questions, you got it, okay. Okay, well Dana's got it as well, so, so we can have Dana do it. Oh, here's somebody just said, "Audio is working good." I don't know who's talking, the problem is I can't see who's asking questions, but I can see when somebody says something, so maybe you can help. Oh, that was Jason Ryan, hi Jason, it's good to, good to see you, I always appreciate, Jason is always very inquisitive when, when watching these things, I appreciate that. Thank you David. Yeah, there's always a little delay, but there was a delay between the visual and the audio last time, I'm not real sure why. I, I really do think putting it on that charger was, my phone really didn't act rights after that, so.
Yeah, Bean and I have an issue with your phone.
Why?
Cause if we get on a thread and conversation on text, your phone just kicks all the messages back, so the message did not say, message failed, message failed, message failed.
Wonder.
So we actually go to another thread?
Or I just block that thread. Denied, that's right. Alright, well, welcome, we're gonna go ahead and kinda begin and, and, uh, begin with a word of prayer, and, um, any, any prayer requests? Remember, this is on Facebook Live, so we don't wanna give any, just great details, but if we wanna pray for someone, I think any, any, all, all people welcome that, or they should, um, but, uh, any prayer requests? Well, let's pray. Hi, Miss Amelia, how are you?
Okay, uh, we're kind of scatterbrained.
Scatterbrainedy, I understand that. Uh-oh, that's okay, that's okay. No, that's okay.
My favorite kind of student.
My favorite.
My favorite what?
Kind of student.
Yeah, well, uh, there were so many things this week.
Yeah, a busy week, that's right.
And today I spent a lot of time watching the inauguration.
Oh, the inauguration? Well, let's say a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for the privilege we have to gather together, Lord, virtually and in person, and to study your word. Lord, we pray that, uh, you would guide us, that your Holy Spirit would be with us, that, that Heavenly Father, we would turn to your word and use it as a foundation for our life. And Lord, we thank you for the moisture that we had recently, we pray that you would continue to bring rain, uh, Lord, and bless this earth, as you, it is your creation. Lord, given to sustain us in our lives, and we thank you for all the blessings you give to us, we pray this in your son's name, amen. Well, hello Lee, how are you?
Doing awesome, how are you?
Doing very well. So, um, we're, if y'all did your homework, uh, if you didn't, it's okay, um, it's there, it's not gonna go away, we'll continue to kinda put it out there and continue to work through it. If you even come back, uh, uh, you know, a month or two from now, or make it a Lenten thing, or whatever you need to do, that's fine. One of our goals is to find more creative ways to resource you with what you need to do studies and Bible studies, and, um, the outline, it really just kinda follows along, and, and it's nothing too difficult or hard. Brenda, you brought out a Lifelight, I don't know if, if some of y'all may remember, uh, the, not, I don't know how widely popular those are still today, but it used to be really, um, popular, the Lifelight Bible Studies. And, um, and, and, and you showed me something in there about Gnosticism, and so I'm gonna touch that here just a little bit, because that was one of the questions, uh, that was asked. So, uh, long story short, uh, use this however you will, um, it's, it's meant to be a resource for you, so online, we'll continue to put it up there. Um, couple things, we have an app, you can go to My Church app, download that, um, we've also put this on our app, um, and so it gives, you can lay in bed, go, go to the app, find, it'll link to all this information as well, so that's a helpful resource. It's not widely used in our church, we don't put a lot of stuff out there, but, but we want people to have it, so when we do, um, and we can also, it'll send little push notifications, we're trying not to abuse that, cause I hate push notifications, so. But, but I think if we do it in, in appropriateness of how many times you do that, it could be a real helpful resource. Um, it's not the attendance one, but we have been putting, uh, instructions on how to download it on the bulletin as well, so it's not that QR code. That's just a, a way to do attendance without passing the, the books around during COVID. So, if you did your homework, or, or if you just had some pondering questions on your way home last week, were there any questions or insights, as you kinda covered all the material, uh, that we didn't cover? Anything that just kinda jumped out at you?
Thought, uh, and it came up in a devotion last week, and I shared that with you, but I'll share it with the class, because I thought it was interesting, the Lutheran hour devotions, they cover what's probably going to be the readings for that Sunday, unless the church varies from those, and so John, chapter one, verses.
Yeah, it was our reading just. It was our reading this past Sunday, uh-huh.
And so the, uh, author of the devotion, based on that reading last week, um, basically keyed in on some things that were interesting, but I had not ever, in looking at this passage, even thought about the last verse, which is fifty-one, it says, "I say to you, you will see the heavens open, and the angels of God ascending and descending on the son of man," and she linked that, the, the Jacobus ladder dream.
Right, as he saw the angels descending and ascending, what, what was the link there, because that's the call of Philip and Nathaniel, um, you know, and then Philip kinda, Nathaniel kinda uncertain until, uh, Jesus tells him, you know, saw him before he knew him.
That was the interesting thing, is the exchange, when this guy said, "Is there anything good that could come out and answer?" Kinda like us talking smack about Prince football team, or something like that.
Right.
We root for Dallas, is there anything good that would come out of Dallas?
Sure, sure.
So he is talking smack about it, and Jesus answers him, and so I'm trying to think, when she linked it to that dream, it was to say, you know, "I am through this lineage," and so there is a link, as your called servant, he was trying to link it, so he realized that I am really the son of God.
Okay, so everything, and, and I think that's kinda the important thing, everything that is in John, if, if you were to kinda, you know, I, I've spent a lot of time studying Matthew, probably more than any other gospel, Matthew's really, a, a couple things that are just really hits hard are, are, uh, um, the, the authority of Jesus, um, and the fact that Jesus comes to be the, the ruler, the reign of God, right? When we say reign of God, or, it's the rule and authority of God here on earth. And, 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 and not that that's disconnected from John's message, but John's message is all about the divinity of God, I mean, think about, um, in, in Matthew, and in Luke, and even in some ways in Mark, you have the genealogy kinda showing through the birth line of how Jesus came to be through the human lineage. John doesn't do that, John goes straight to, "In the beginning was the word, and the word was God, and the word was with God, and the word was God," and then you, you know, uh, you know, eventually by the time you get to fourteen, if you didn't figure it out already, this word that John was referring to is Jesus, I mean, so it, it just jumps right into the fact that this man is God. The commentary that I have been using, it's really old, I say really old, I, I think it's like in the forties, um, it's not the easiest read in the world, I just, uh, purchased, I swear, I purchased the Concordia Commentary several weeks ago, and apparently I never pushed go, but, cause it never showed up, and, and I looked for a record of it and didn't have it, so we, I did that today. The Concordia Commentaries are just really well laid out, I, I, I have read literally, you know, m- many dozens of different commentaries. And I truly believe in this, I'm biased, I get it, but the Concordia Commentary Series, that's our own church bodies commentary series, are the best laid out commentary series, or easy to read, but anyways. That's the difference over there, but, but the Linsky, who I'm reading, he, he really, really emphasizes that, and, and I would assume that, that, the Concordia one will say the same, but really emphasizes that this is all about, and he uses the word attestation, right, and to attest something is to give evidence towards, or to give witness towards, right? And, uh, so that, he, and he uses that word, and you'll see that in our outlines, I kinda took on that word, even though it's not a word we may use now, but it's to give testimony or witness to, or evidence towards, so, Lee might even know that word better than I do, but attestation, do you know that word?
Yes, sir.
Is, am I saying it right?
I think so.
Okay, good, good, I just wanna make sure I'm not, uh, but, 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 cause it's just a word we don't use, but, you know, maybe the forties used it a lot, but, but that's the whole thing, each, each story kinda is a story that is meant to draw the reader into the knowledge and the fact, and to give proof to the fact that this is the son of God. So John is a great book to turn to, if somebody says, "Well, Jesus never claimed to be the son of God," well, not if this, if you believe the stories of John are true, he absolutely claimed to be the son of God, he absolutely claimed, and when I say son of God, I mean, he claimed to be divine, um, he absolutely made no bones about saying, "I am divinity here, uh, um, I am God himself, in the flesh." John draws a lot of attention towards that, uh, so, uh, so that's why I was curious how he was used, and that's kinda, it sounds like he, they drew that connection to further, um, uh, engage that this Jesus is none other but God in, in the flesh.
And John, and John also, uh, reminds us here, that John the Baptist was the same witness, because when he saw the, uh, the Holy Spirit, I mean, they said the day that, uh, Jesus was coming to him, and said, "Behold, the Lamb of God."
Right.
Uh, so, uh, so it was not just he that he's saying this, John was.
Yeah, and, and it's not just Jesus making this claim, but it's all the characters and witnesses, and followers, and disciples, and the crowd, and everyone around the story, outside of the, the Pharisees and the Sadducee route to destroy him, but everyone gives witness to that account, it gives their attestation as well, um, to the fact that this Jesus is God.
Cause right now I'm reading a book called, uh, "To Be an Atheist, You Need More Faith."
Yeah, yeah, to be an atheist, you need, you need more faith, right, um.
And some paper, I think I read, uh, in, if, because this author originally, he didn't believe in Jesus, like anyway, he studied, uh, with college, and he wanted to find out if God really existed.
Sure, and then he found the evidence toward.
The evidence, yes.
So, yeah, there's a lot of great books, uh, we used to read A Case for Christ, and, uh, was, is a good one. Um, I wanna start on the Gospel of John, um, lesson three, if y'all wouldn't mind turning to that, that starts in chapter two, verse twelve, um, that's where I would like to, to pick up today. You know, so what we're skipping, we're skipping the wedding, wedding at Cana, that's a, but, but again, the wedding at Cana, I'll just kinda really quickly go through, the wedding at Cana is a great, I mean, it, it's such a well-known story in scripture, and we would call that the first miracle, um, of Jesus, right, and, and, or the first sign. The word sign and miracle, uh, that's one of the questions that are in there, what's the difference between a sign and a miracle? Nothing really, I mean, except that a sign is more directional, and when you think about a sign, it's a directional word, uh, it is meant to draw your attention towards something else, and so these signs, again, going back to that theme that I was talking about, is meant to, the signs that Jesus performs, or miracles that Jesus performs, are meant to draw the reader's attention to the fact that this is none other than Jesus. His, i- it's the first miracle, but it's not a fully public miracle, think about it, it's a very select group that get to witness that miracle, later on, his miracles are wide open for the whole world to see, anyone who's there, but this one is, is just the, those are, are, were at the wedding, um, um, the disciples, and Mary, his mother, and, and so forth. And then when Jesus turns those six jars of water, those are purification jars of water, um, they're meant for ceremonial cleansing and purification before all sorts of different acts, uh, and, uh, so those are the ones that he turned to wine, and, um, there's a lot of great studies and Bible studies that can come out of that. But that's his first one, and, uh, there's a lot of neat things to learn from that, then you have this great discourse of, uh, um, Jesus at the temple, right, and that's, that's kinda where, where we're gonna start. And, uh, everyone loves angry Jesus, right, um, and so that's kinda one of the questions to ask, uh, we all know the story, right, when Jesus turns over the tables, has whips, and, you know, made out of cord, and he's lashing those around, and there's great, uh, if you've ever seen, you know, all the great Jesus films, where they show this, I'm trying, what's a, a good one? Where they, where they show Jesus turning the tables, or anyways, um, always a great scene, and, uh, um, and, and there's always a lot of debate, was Jesus angry? Is anger a result of sin, or is it a sign of sin, what, how, what, how do we respond to that, has anybody ever been asked that question? Yeah, what is righteous anger, that's a great question too. Okay, something that goes against the law of God, so, so when somebody sins, and I get really angry at them, is my anger the same as Jesus's anger here? What's the difference?
The footnote, and I would, I would always just say that Christ had a righteous anger, but that's your question, is what is that?
Yeah.
Footnote says that his anger does not arise from hate, it springs from love toward God.
Yeah, so, so our anger always comes, what, what do we always drag with us in our anger? Yeah, sin is always there, I mean, it is always there, and we think we can get rid of it, we, we just can't, sin is always there, so, so, and when we have anger, you're gonna find some selfish ambition, or misplaced ambition in that anger, right, there's, there's gonna be something in there that is, um, not pointing to glorify God in it. Um, and, and that's gonna be the difference, uh, between when Jesus has anger and when we do. You know, and one of the questions is, could you, should you even call it anger, because part of our anger is the manifestation of emotions that are, we're just not dealing with appropriately perhaps, but, uh, anyways, it, it, it kinda turns into a, an argument of semantics more than anything, but, um.
Well, it would be hard not to call it anger, just describing the event itself, cause if you read the event itself, it says, "Making a whip, he drove them out, he turned over, um, turned, poured the coins out, drove them out, so to take these things away, and then make my father's house a house of trade, blah, blah, blah."
Yeah.
I read that, and then saw it was an act of love, I would've thought, wow.
Right. And, and is this unusual for Jesus to do this, I mean, you think about, he carries the same attributes as, um, God of the Old Testament, I mean, it's not like we would completely separate. Um, and it's not like we would be surprised if God acts in just judgment against wrongdoing. You have him, I mean, even going all the way back to Noah, it says that he, uh, along the lines of, he regretted creating man, cause they were so evil, right? And then brings the flood about, and saves Noah and his family, cause they were righteous.
It's, it's one example that I've thought of recently, and I've thought about it because of just where we are as a, as a culture, and our conversation as a culture, and not taking that to the broad level. And a lot of times I will see friends who are Christian, who will make comments from kind of a righteous anger viewpoint, and I always think, did Christ outside of the church ever address anyone in an angry way, other than the Pharisees, or in this case, it's usually in the context of the people who were of the church, I don't know if he ever lashed out in government, or.
No, he never did government, um, he did the Pharisees, um, you, you know, you think in Matthew, you have the text, "You brewed of vipers who warned you to avoid the coming wrath, um, in keeping with the repentance," you know, and, uh, so, uh, I, I don't know, there's times where he let people kinda walk away in their own guilt. The rich man, he was told, "Sell everything you have and give it to the poor," and the guy's like, "I can't do that, won't do that," and walked away, and I always, that's a, a great sermon I heard, is the fact that Jesus didn't chase him down. Didn't go, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, it's okay, it's okay, come here, let's talk through this some more," and it was like, "I know where your heart is," right, and kinda let, left them to their own heart, and, uh, you know, those are kinda times where God, where Jesus judged harshly, I would say, he judged his own disciples harshly, "Get behind me Satan," and those are harsh judgments. But yeah, that, 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 what we would call that emotional response that is anger, um, this is probably one of the more pointed texts that we would turn to for that.
But I just, I can't think of a time that he turned it to those outside of the church.
Yeah, I, I don't know either.
Jason said, he wasn't angry, he was working on some review, correct, and teach.
Yes, and, and I think he's, uh, Jason's right, so Jason's comments were, you know, working on, I guess I don't need to repeat it for the camera, they can read it, right? But, uh, review, correct, and teach, and, and I think that's exactly right. Um, the challenge is, is when we, you know, we gotta make sure in, when we're rebuking, correcting, and teaching, and, and I, I do wanna talk about this, this is actually kinda what my sermon's gonna be about some Sunday. Um, but when we're working on that, that we, we make sure that we put God in front of ourselves. We had some great conversations, I've, I've had a busy circuit week, if you would call it that, so Monday, I was in San Angelo at our Circuit Visitors Conference, and then Tuesday, we're having our circuit visit, circuit meeting here in Lubbock, and, um, so I haven't had just a whole lot of hours in the office this week, and, um, but, but I, I thoroughly enjoy those times, cause we get to interact with, just, you know, listen to your brother pastors speak about a lot of different things, and one of the things Alan Eckert was talking about is, is, uh, and, and we'll get into this here a little bit, but what it truly means to, to love, right, um, and part of it is, uh, the challenge that we have is, we always put our own agendas, and our own emotions, and our own presuppositions towards people. We, we put ourselves before God's love. And, uh, so then when we go to someone that we know is a sinner, for instance, um, and we try to correct the sinner, which is, there's, is that a good thing? If you see somebody who's doing something that is wrong and against God, is it a good thing to correct them? Well, the answer is yes, it can be, but it depends on why you're doing it, and what your relationship, and are you doing, are you speaking that truth out of love? And if we're putting kinda, and sometimes in a lot of ways, and it's a little bit of what the sermon's about last week even, but if we put ourselves in front of that, a lot of times my correcting comes from a place of what? I'm right, of trying to lift up my own righteousness, as opposed to draw the sinner back to, uh, back to God in repentance, right? And, 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 and that's, it's what I think is the greatest danger of Facebook ironically, um, and, and I pick on Facebook, but, but any social media outlet. Because when we post something that is a correcting post of righteous, that, that is upholding a righteousness, we don't have the opportunity to do it in a way that says to the person that we're talking to, "I am saying this because I love you," right? Um, and, and I'm saying this because I love you, and I'm trying to draw you back to a loving relationship with God. And, and so it's, it's real hard, it's, we gotta make sure that when we are correcting, that we're, that it's God that's in front of us, that we become less, so that he becomes more, to use John the Baptist's words. Uh, and, and I think that's what love truly looks like, that, and, and one of the things that, again, Pastor Eckert was talking about is, you know, you think about it, Jesus was a friend of sinners. You know, we've heard this, and, and I never really thought about it in these terms, but, but we've heard this, we sing the song, "What a friend we have in Jesus," right? And, and we know the song so well, and, and he says, "But when truly means that he's a friend, that means he is willing to sit down with sinners," now that doesn't mean willing to sit down, you know, like, "Oh yeah, Jesus sits down with me, I am one of those sinners," no, he's, he sits down with people we would call, you, you know what I mean, like, we like this call that, "No, no, no, we're the righteous," right? But I'm talking about, he sits down with his enemy, he sits down with the outcast, he sits down with those who are against him, he sits, and, and he enjoys their company. Right, and, and I thought, huh, it's a different message than I've always said, I've always said, you know, God doesn't, and you've heard me saying it, God doesn't look down on us, he goes, "Oh, I just love Eric," you know? What if he does? I mean, what if he truly enjoys the mess of my life, not that he enjoys the messy part, but he enjoys the life that is me, even though it's a mess?
I've heard it put in that context before, but I've also heard it put, which is where I think we draw ourselves into trouble, believer and non-believer alike, because the non-believer is also his creation.
And he enjoys their company.
And so when we judge a non-believer for being a non-believer, we're really not serving God well.
You hit the nail on the head, when we judge a non-believer for not being a believer, we, we're really being, well, how'd you finish it, we're.
We're not serving God.
We're not serving God, and, and that's exactly, we're certainly not carrying the heart of God. And, and it's, you know, and this, don't carry this too far, and think that I'm saying universal salvation, or anything like that, it's not what I'm saying, but God loves his creation, even though it is broken, he loves his creation. Um, the same way that a parent, but more so, a parent loves their children, even though their children are, are broken.
That's the parable of the lost sheep.
Yeah, that's exactly right, that's the parable of the lost sheep, it's a parable of the lost sheep, it's a parable of the prodigal son. Um, when the son goes, "He was a mess," and a lot of fathers would say, "I am done with him, you're no longer, you're no longer a son of mine," and that's what the brother did, "You're no brother of mine."
Well, interestingly enough, when I got the opportunity to teach that class, and Dan gave me that book that was about that stick, that had all the stuff on there. The actual title of that is The Two Lost Sons.
Yes, and they were both lost, yeah, no, you're exactly right, um, you know, it, it's, it's a very, boy, it just brings a lot of, oh, to my life, to know that, that Jesus loves the sinner. Um, and, and it's not to say that he loves all aspects of my sin, that's not what I'm saying, but that he genuinely loves me, and, and, uh, you know, I often dismiss that, and, and maybe shouldn't, uh, so, uh, so I'm always learning, we're always learning together, and, and, uh, that was one of the things, I, I did appreciate Pastor Eckert saying that, uh, but, uh, yeah, it, it, it's a remarkable thing to, to think of that.
When I was seventeen years old, uh, I was going to a mission to the jail, it was about forty-five, uh, minutes on driving from the city of La Jolla to another town, and the missionary, uh, he was a young man, also studying for medicine, he was from Texas, and he and, and my friend, we were two girls, and we drove there once a month, and we visited. And we visited with some, uh, people that have committed, uh, murder, and, uh, we remember when we were driving home, that we really enjoyed visiting with him, because he was funny, and then we could not believe that he had murdered somebody.
Right.
Well, he was in jail, he seemed so, uh, good, so we gave him Bible studies first, the, the aim was to, uh, evangelize.
Sure, and, and then to think about, you know, as you were loving him, but you, but also share the message that, hey, whereas the world may not think very highly of you, right? I mean, I, I would, and I, I'll, you know, admittedly put myself in that, if I met a murderer, I'd probably say, "Yeah, you're probably not high up on my list of people I wanna befriend," you know? Yeah, but Jesus genuinely, it's not that he loves him cause he has to, so, well, he's God, he's got to do this, no, he genuinely does, it's, it's a, anyways, we're getting lost, but, um, it, it's a cool thought. So you have, um, in, in full swing, right, uh, grouping together a number of notable attestations to his divine sonship, you, so we're, it kinda goes story after story, and that's kinda what this whole section is, you have first the cleansing of the temple, right, then secondly, you have the conversation with Nicodemus as an attestation, or testimony to his, uh, divine sonship, right? Then you have thirdly, of Jesus and Judea, and then you have the testimony of. Then you have thirdly of Jesus in Judea, and then you have the testimony of the Baptist, that's John the Baptist. Um, it kind of takes a break from John the Baptist, has a few stories, and we go right back into John the Baptist. Um, then you have fourthly, Jesus in Samaria, and you have the woman at the, at the well there. Um, and and there's a great attestation there, and then fifthly, you have Jesus in Galilee. Um, the events in Cana, um, and the cleansing of the temple, they're connected, so the wedding at Cana. And the cleansing of the temple, you you know that, because if you were to go, it says, um, after this, he went down and just. You you, whenever they connect things in timeline, you kind of follow that and you would say, okay, they're meant to be drawn together. He went down to Capernaum with his mother and his brothers and his disciples, we would say, not that he just went down, but they moved there. They literally relocated to Capernaum, and both commentaries I have agree with that. Um, and they stayed there for a few days, um, the Passover of the Jews was at hand. Um, this is the, uh, since Jesus started his ministry, the first Passover that he would have gone to. Uh, Passover was meant to last uh, seven days, I believe. It was just in expected for every male Jew to go to this Passover, is even I would say more than expected, is required, it's just. Um, it's just something you you did, uh, and that's a tradition that existed for a long time. Um, and uh, um, and while, when he got there in the temple, uh, he found those who were selling. Um, one was selling oxen and sheep and pigeons, and then another table was doing money changing, sitting there, so what's going on? Why why do you think he, why are these people there and doing what they're doing? And what would be a modern day equivalent, and and uh, I'm gonna say be careful, it's not the. The raffle of, you know, a quilt or to raise money for LWML or something like that. That that would not be a modern day example of that, um, what would be a modern day example of that?
Crawfish boil.
A crawfish, okay, there would not be a modern day example, a crawfish boil. The crawfish boil would not be, so so what they're doing is they're selling ox and sheep, and we could do a, oh, spend a long time. Reading, you know, Exodus and Leviticus and what each of those represent in pigeons, but they were selling animals. For the purpose of sacrifice, and this was a time to atone for your sins. This was a time, you know, the feast would go on for days. And then it found its culmination there at the very end, when they would sacrifice the lamb and every single uh. Body of people, whether they were families or households, but they would find groups, because if you remember in the Passover, what was the thing? You had to consume all of it, if your family was too small to eat all of the lamb, then go next door and join with their. With them, right, but the the, and think about this with communion, by the way. Um, in the Old Testament with the Passover, it was required that they consume of the sacrificial lamb. Um, and uh, so that's what they would do, and they would do this even here now, that's was on that last day, they would find that. They would eat that Passover lamb, so do you have these these money changers, in the meantime, they would have other. Um, uh, sacrifices, and they were all sacrifices for atonement. Um, and so they would sell these sacrifices and and so, but people were coming from all kinds of regions. And so you had just literal money changers that would, that would make their money. And exchanging goods and and trading and and exchanging money so that, um, they could go and do their sacrifices.
I suppose when they traded money, it was like going into communist countries, because when I went to East Germany. They traded you a mark for a dollar.
Yeah, they do one to one.
German mark might be worth a dollar, but the Eastern mark is like twenty-five cents, but they exchanged you one for one. They were making a killing.
Yeah, they were doing really well then, um. So, yeah, like, I suppose you go to Uganda, it's thirty-five hundred to one or something, you know, and, but uh, yeah, it it it. They're probably, you know, they were making their money, for sure. But think about what's going on, they're using the church and the church's salvation and grace, right? Um, for their own profit, it would be the equivalent of this. What would happen if the LWML decided, and and why am I picking on the, I'm looking at Brenda, so. But if the LWML decided on Sunday mornings, we're gonna sell the wafers for communion. That would be the equivalent of this.
How much?
How about, how about the churches where people will be for networking for business and?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure there was a lot of networking going on too, I don't, I don't know if the networking itself was, but but you're, you're literally, you know, and. Yeah, um, uh, you know, or if we, if we, you know, sold literally the 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 communion. Um, I I, this maybe gets a little too pointed, or if we sold the water for baptism, now, the Roman church does that actually. Um, so you could actually, I've been and seen, you put fifty cents and get holy water dispensed. Um, so you can take that and go bless your home or something like that. Yeah, or you keep your child's baptism water, but, um, anyways, I'm not trying to pick on the church body, but. Um, I I saw a comment just pop in the screen, they weren't, they shouldn't have even been in the temple itself, and then, and there's a lot of truth to that too, it's not just. The fact that they were selling the grace of God, but the fact that they were, um, where they were doing that as well. So you have, if if y'all, um, ever, I would encourage you, Google what the uh, temple looked like, and you would find. Uh, several, uh, there's a lot of great pictures, but it's kind of, if you imagine, inner circles, right? Um, that would be concentric circles, they get smaller and smaller and smaller. You had the temple courtyard, which is where this would have been taking place, and then beyond that, you have, um, what's outside the temple gates. But in that temple courtyard, you know, that's where only the Jews would go, and that's where, um, uh, they would. Uh, do uh, a lot of their rituals and so forth, and then within there, they had another inner work. Um, which is where kind of the the Pharisees would go and the priests would go and so forth. Then you had what was called the Holy of Holies, which is like the, this room, very inner circle room. And the, what you call the the smallest of the concentric circles, but, and there's where the priest, where the high priest would only be able to go. Like, one time a year, and uh, um, so, and and I believe that one time was maybe during this Passover, when they sacrificed the lamb. So, uh, but, but what you have is you have just in the place of worship itself. Now, obviously, somebody makes money on wafers, no one, those aren't, don't, they they don't come free, they manufacture, we have to go and. And buy communion wafers and they come in, and, um, so it's, it's not like them doing that. But to do that in the same church of God itself is, is, there's something wrong with that, um, something really wrong with that. Um, okay, uh, so, any thoughts or questions? All right, so if we go to uh, Malachi three, let's, if you can find Malachi, see, there's a real challenge, you gotta find Malachi, right? This is one of those Bible races. Malachi three, could you read that for me, Malachi three, one to three? You lost it.
Three, okay, Malachi three. Behold, I'm going to send my messenger and he will clear the way before me. And the Lord whom you see will come to the temple in the messenger of the covenant whom you delight. Behold his coming, says the Lord, a host of of our.
Just, uh, the first three verses.
But, but who can endure the day of his coming? And who can stand when he appears? For he is like a refiner fire and like purists so. He will sit in, as a silver, a purified of silver, and he will purify the sons of Libai. And refine them like gold and silver, so that they may present to the Lord offerings in righteousness.
Okay, so. And that's what he was doing there, I mean, refining and purifying the temple, right? So that the people who bring their offerings can do that in righteousness and in purity. Um, and not tainted with the ambitions of man, um, so, uh. Uh, so Malachi three, one through three, and, um. So, okay, if we go on, so the Passover of the Jews was at hand, I'm gonna just kind of read through it. Um, and Jesus went up to Jerusalem in the temple, and literally when they says go up to Jerusalem. They say go up to Jerusalem because literally Jerusalem sat higher in elevation than other places, so it's always up to Jerusalem. In the temple, he found those who were selling oxen and sheep and pigeons and money changers sitting there and making a whip of cords. He drove them all out of the temple with the sheep and oxen. And he poured out the coins of the money changers and overturned their tables. And he told those who sold pigeons, take these things away, do not make my father's house a house of trade. His disciples remembered that it was written, zeal for your house will consume me, and so they remembered. This Old Testament reference, um. David, do you have in your notes what verse or what Old Testament reference that is?
Psalm sixty-nine.
Thank you, Psalm sixty-nine.
First nine.
Um. So the Jews said to him, what sign do you show us for doing these things? So the Jews are doing what, they're asking for a sign, right? Now, again, John speaks a lot of signs, um, and they, so what are they basically saying? Where do you get this authority, and you get to claim in my father's house, right, and how do you claim these things? Um, so get, tell us, what's your proof that you have the authority and are are speaking truthfully here? And what does he say, what's the sign he tells them? Yeah, destroy the temple, and it'll take three days to lay, raise it, and they're going, whoa. It took forty-six years to build this temple, and you're gonna raise it back up in three days? Of course, we know he was speaking about the temple of his body. When therefore he was raised from the dead three days later, and his disciples remembered that he had said this, and they believed the scriptures and the word Jesus spoken. Right, and so that's the sign that he points them to, he says, you'll know in my resurrection, this, then you will know. Um, the temple, by the way, this is, um, uh. Was originally, this is Solomon's temple, it was built, right, and then destroyed by Nebuchadnezzar, and then built again by. Um, Ni- Nehemiah and Ezra, it was called Herod's temple. Um, because Herod spent a long time uh, re- rebuilding it, you know, uh, almost like renovating it. Um, and that was a very long process or renovation, and so, um, this is the same temple that was destroyed in seventy A.D. We talked about that last week, um, and there's nothing left of it now, where actually, you go to this site where the temple was, and that's where the. Giant dome on the rock is, the Muslim, uh, the big Muslim mosque that's there. Uh, sitting right where the side of this temple now. So what do you think, um, it says, Jesus, what did Jesus say that should may, have made it clear he was not talking about the temple building? But about his bodies, is there some clue that would have made sense? Yeah, and and just the time, I mean, obviously, you can't build that temple in three days. You know, how would he uh, even bring that, um? Think, go ahead.
When he was raised from the dead is when he became clear to his disciples, what he meant.
Mm-hmm, so, and and it, and it's all, it's amazing how after the resurrection, all the aha moments started to appear. And this is, seems to be one of them, the chapter closes with many people believing the signs that Jesus gave them, and it says that, right? Um, he says, what sign, he tell them that, um, and it says, uh. In verse twenty-two, when therefore he was raised from the dead, his disciples remembered that he said this, and they believed the scriptures. Um, now, when he was in Jerusalem at the Passover feast, many believed in his name, verse twenty-three. Uh, when they saw the signs that he was doing. Well, what signs, will this be the signs of authority? And it sounds like there were other signs going on that are not mentioned necessarily here. Um, but uh, but many believed him. Now, it's interesting, because there's, if we read this verse again. When Jesus, when he was in Jerusalem at the Passover, many believed, that's a word. In his name, when they saw the signs that he was doing, but Jesus on his part did not entrust. We use two different words here in English, in the Greek, it is the same word, the same exact word. Um, so it's kind of interesting, so many, you could say entrusted themselves to Jesus. But he did not entrust himself back to them, many believed in Jesus, but he did not believe himself back to them. Um, or committed themselves to Jesus, but he did not commit themselves back to them. Um, it's used the same way, why did people believe and entrusted Jesus, but he did not reciprocate, what do you think? Think about it a little bit, go ahead.
Well, he, he, he knows the heart of man, so, um, he would know the truth.
Okay.
What was the motivation and, uh, yeah, because sometimes we can say, I believe it, but, but this. Uh, our actions might not show the.
Okay, so maybe their belief wasn't pure enough, is kind of what you, and he knew that, but it does say they believed.
But it had to do with the permanence.
Okay.
It's cool that you can do that, do it again.
Okay, uh, the the fact that they were demanding a sign, you you believe this because you demand a sign, or. Um, he does say later on, blessed are those who believe and who have not seen a sign, right?
And you know, um, I think that Jesus also, when he told those things, and people did not understand it. Understand it, it was because it was not revealed to them. Uh, it was not revealed.
Mm-hmm, I I think a a lot of what you're saying is is, on all fronts is right, I mean, if you read through the text, it it says why. It takes a little bit of, you know, thinking, and it says, because he knew all people and needed no one to bear witness about man. For he himself knew what was in man, so, that thought of committing yourself. Right, to someone, did Jesus need to attach himself to us, or do we need to attach ourselves to him? Right, we need to bear witness to, about him, we don't need Jesus to bear witness about us. Does that make sense, I think it's a directional thing, the arrow always needs to go. God's grace comes down to us, our praise and worship of commitment, or what do you wanna say, goes up to God, never reversed. Right, and it kind of, so it kind of says, he knew what was in man, so he didn't need to bear witness to them. Well, he needs man to bear witness towards him, and then needs is never a good word to put with Jesus, but, um. Just kind of an interesting thought, but it's a good reminder for us, we need to attach ourselves to Jesus.
You know, when we pray for something and it doesn't come as we are asking. But maybe, many years later, uh, it comes around a session, if I, if I, the answer, the way I wanted it. It was not right, the right answer, so, it was not revealed to me. If what I was asking was not the right thing.
Right.
Until.
Later, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so we move straight from there into this conversation with Nicodemus. Which is a great conversation, can really be seen as kind of a summary of all of Jesus's teaching, and when you think about it. Um, it it says, um, he enters into a number of conversations, you have one with Nicodemus, you have again the Samaritan woman, the Gentile. Official, you need the the man at the pool of Bethesda, or Bethesda, rather, and the, um. And and then the, the things that he uh, talks about, the conversion with Nicodemus, it constitutes a summary of Jesus's teaching. Dealing with kingdom, regeneration, faith, the son of man, God's love, plan for salvation, judgment, unbelief. And and all of that is kind of right here, um, what's the great verse that everyone knows that comes out of this conversation with Nicodemus? Right, we all know, for God so loved the world, that he gave his one and only son, right, John three sixteen, we all know, John three sixteen. Um. So, uh, Nicodemus, just a little tidbit on him, he was a Pharisee, he was a ruler of the Jews. Um, uh, and uh, I I do wanna ask y'all, we use this word a lot, and when we talk about the word Jews. There's a lot of debate and a lot of confusion, um, uh, between denominations on what we mean by that word. I think it is very important to have clear delineations of what we mean. I think it is very important to have clear delineations of what we mean when we say the Jews. What we're talking about here, um, and really the term Jews was not used until second temple Judaism, right? So that would be after, uh, Ezra and Nehemiah's temple was built. Um, and so that's kinda what, what we're referring to, the people who lived during that time. Um, probably all the way, I, I don't know when that timeframe would end. Um, when, when we talk about Jews, we, we would make a distinction between an is, is, is Israelite, a Hebrew, a Jew, and an Israeli. Does everybody understand? We would say those are four different things. What would we say is an Israeli? A citizen of Israel founded in nineteen forty-six, right? Um, an Israelite would be the people in the Old Testament that you find with Moses and so forth. Up until, um, the second, second temple. Um, and then, uh, a Hebrew was kind of a name that Israelites would use when speaking to, uh, non-Israelites. They would call themselves Hebrews. So like Jonah is a good example of that, when he says, I am a Hebrew, when he's talking to the ship, shipmates. Um, They go back and forth, like through Exodus, they use both terms. And, um, and a lot of times it depends on where the conversation is. Um, I think these are important distinctions, um, I just do, uh, but that's a very gross gloss over that topic and that's for maybe another day. Absolutely. Yeah, and I, and I would say that would be usage of a different, yeah. Not, not a one-to-one parallel with what we're referring to here. Here, when John is referring to the Jews, he's typically referring to the Jewish leadership. He is referring to not just any average Jew, he's referring to the Pharisees, the Sadducees, and the Jewish leadership. Yeah, that's exactly right. And it's not just saying a bunch of random people. It's, it's, Nicodemus would be one of the ones. In fact, um, you could even go backwards, it says, when many believed Jesus. That Nicodemus would be one of those many, uh, after the turning of the tables that believed, we would say. So this kinda flows straight from those who believed in the signs that they saw and then they kinda moved through this. Um, and so, um, Nicodemus, he mentions those signs, and so that's kinda how we know that. And so, um, just, just reading through it. He says, there was a man of the Pharisees named Nicodemus. He was a ruler of the Jews. This man came to Jesus by night and said to him, Rabbi, we know that you are a teacher come from God. For no one can do these signs that you do unless God is with them. Again, we don't know the specifics, but know, he has done some things. Um, Jesus answered him, truly, truly, I say to you. What does that word truly, truly mean? We talked about this also. It, it, we don't really know how to translate that word. You'll find a hundred different ways to translate, lots of different, uh, Bibles translated different ways. Some say, I think the King James would say, verily, verily, I say unto thee, right? Um, truly, truly, uh, uh, what's another? Anybody else have another version? I tell you the truth, what, are you reading that? Is that? NIV says, I tell you the truth. It, it real, the word is literally amen. It says in the Greek, amen, amen. Right? So think about when we pray, right? And when we say amen, that word amen, in fact, we talked about this at our circuit, that word amen is not just some, the end, right? But we're saying truth, right? It is true. Um, and in fact, when we're requesting from God in our prayers, we're saying, true. And, and Luther talks about this, true, you will fulfill this. I believe it. You will answer my prayer. So be it. It, so it is said, so it is, it is truth, which is why they say truly, truly. It is, it is, uh, it just kinda, Not a gender reference, no. Oh, oh, okay, yeah. I don't know what you're saying right now. I'm gonna move on. So, um, and so that's, it's, it really is a, whenever you see that, and you'll see it all the time and Jesus says it all the time. It's, it's pay attention to what he's saying, right? And, cause what he's saying, whenever, whenever he says truly, truly, whatever he's saying next, it's gonna be something really important that you wanna pay attention to. Right? It's, it's a really, um, uh, in the Old Testament, another indicator for that would be whenever you read behold. Um, in fact, in the New Testament, you'll find some beholds too. Or indeed, some translators like saying behold, some say indeed. Whenever you find those words, pay attention to whatever follows after it. Yeah, I haven't looked. I, I can, I can look though. So, um, so truly, truly, I say to you, unless one is born again, he cannot see the kingdom of God. Is that an important thing to know? How many of us want to see the kingdom of God? All of us wanna see it. So this is an important thing that Jesus is saying. He's saying, alright Nicodemus, I'm telling you, unless you're born again, you won't even see the kingdom of God. Nicodemus asks, what I would believe it to be a dumb question, but there's no such thing, right? How can a man be born again when he is old, right? Obviously you can't. Can he enter a second time in his mother's womb and be born? And there's a way, Greek, you write questions where you know, you presume, presume, the answer's gonna be no. And that's what one of these, he's like, the answer's no, obviously. You, you can, you can assume the answer to be yes, and you can write it one way, or you can assume the answer to be no, to write it another way. Yeah, Nicodemus is a good man in this. He's one of the ones who believed. He's not, yeah. He's not testing. He's, he, I think it is very honest and very genuine. But, but he, Nicodemus is asking the question, knowing the answer is, that's, that Jesus is not implying to do that. So, he, he knows that already.
I know I've sat through a presentation before and it was a, a group and they, they root themselves in Baptist theology. And so, we went around the table as we were eating and he said, when were you born again? And I just sat there and thought, well, I, I was baptized when I was born.
Yeah, so that's a great question. Yeah, so what is our answer to that? When were you born again? When Jesus died on the cross? Yeah, so I would, I would probably point to my baptism. That, that really makes Baptists mad.
Well, I don't wanna, it was the Gideons, and I was at a Gideon,
Oh, sure, yeah. I've been in that same situation. Um, and, and I just, I hold firm to it, you know? And, and I'm not mad at them, they're, they have their theology, I have mine, and then, you know, we can live in peace and in unity even and, um, but, but yeah, that,
I did hear a Catholic one time, I hate to sit here and take up the whole conversation, but I heard Catholic one time. He was a policeman down in Houston, talking to our high school class. This girl raised her hand and she said, are you saved? And he looked at her and said, sweetie, I'm Catholic, we, we were never lost.
Yeah, uh, we would say your life begins here. It, it, I mean, that, that's how, that's our theology. That our sinful life ends here. Sinful life, our old Adam dies here and our new Adam begins here. It, it doesn't have to, right? It can begin through, you know, there's three means of grace. But, but for the average Christian, that's, that's where it begins. Um, that's where we say we're born again. And that's kinda, and so his, Jesus's response to Nicodemus is, is another truly, truly, right? Truly, truly. He says, unless you're born again of water and of the spirit. Now, a lot of debate here, by the way. Is this a reference to baptism? A lot of Lutherans would say yes. I'm not sure they're all right. So, I, I, I'm not sure, I, I think you can go there, um, To baptism? Right. How, how many of you have a capital S on, on spirit? Anybody have a lowercase s? You have a lowercase s? What version do you have? MacArthur study, okay. Anybody else have a lowercase s? So that's another, this is another thing that is greatly debated, is, is this in reference to the Holy Spirit? Or to the spirit, um, in terms of lowercase spirit, not the Holy Spirit? Kinda like wind blows, right? Cause he uses that analogy. Just spirit, lowercase s though. So this is, and, and we're gonna have some fun here, maybe next week, talking about some Greek stuff. Because this is where like, if you wonder why pastors have to learn Greek and Hebrew, we read an awesome article, I'm gonna share it with y'all next week. Um, about why we have to learn that. And, and it uses John eight as an example. And so I thought, that's gonna be great and in perfect timing for us to talk about it. Um, but this is one of those things, because when you read an English translation of a Bible, somebody is making an interpretive decision on your behalf. They are deciding how you should read it. Did y'all know that? And that's why there's a lot of versions, because people may decide a little different for you. So, so in, in your versions of the Bible, some have decided that the reference to spirit here is a reference to the Holy Spirit. Some have made reference to, I believe, and, uh, believe that the reference to spirit here is spirit in terms of spirit. Like as in, uh, it is willing to, the spirit is willing to, to kinda go and flow, not, not the Holy Spirit, but, um, so, and, uh, so it's just kind of an interesting thing. Um, he cannot, go ahead.
Well, Dan talked one time, when we were meeting in a group of men, and he said, depending on the reference, if it's the angel of God, it could mean the reincarnate Christ.
Yeah. Correct. So there's a, there's a definitive angel of God that we find in the Old Testament. So if you were to ask me what I believe, um, boy. Um, I don't know if I'm smart enough to have a real definitive answer. I think you are not wrong. And if I had to, if I was to twist my arms, I'd pick something. I would say, I, I think there's nothing wrong with pointing this to baptism. I think there's nothing wrong with pointing this to the Holy Spirit. Um, no, it should be here before next week and I'll, I'll read now. Yes, please do. I, I certainly, there's nothing wrong with those, with either way. It's just a matter of how you wanna spin it. Um, I, I don't believe it would. There are other verses that I turn to. So when, you put it this way, when I sit down and go over baptism, which happens a lot, when somebody says, I, I wanna talk about baptism. I do not go to John, John three. This is not one of my go-to verses. I go to, I go to, uh, Matthew twenty-eight and I go to Romans six. Though, that's where I go when I wanna talk about baptism. And Matthew twenty-eight picks up the mandate for baptism. And then Romans six picks up, in my opinion, the theology of life and death, or rather reverse, death and then life and baptism. And that summarizes everything that we know and need to know for baptism. Really? Yeah. Lowercase, cause that's referring then to our spirit, which would always be lowercase, right? And verse six. Let's keep going. So verse, verse seven, um, yeah, uh, somebody just put Titus three, five, and that's often a, uh, often a great reference that people will turn to with this verse two in parallel. Um, we can turn to that if you want. Yeah, so, uh, Titus three, five, I, and I even thought about putting that in the outline and, and I, and I just, I didn't. You, you, it started to get a little long already. Starting verse four, just grabs some context, but when the goodness and loving kindness of God, our Savior appeared. He saved us not because of works done by us in righteousness, but according to his own mercy, by the washing of regeneration and renewal of the Holy Spirit. Yeah, so, if you believe it's a capital S, you will go to that verse. Right? That, that's just kinda wh- what you do. Um, and it's good, it's good. And, and, and that's, yeah, and, and I think it's a good thing. I like to bring up these things. I think it's important that we, we know that sometimes it requires a lot of thinking. It's, it's, and I think it's important, we know that when we read the English Bible, wrestle with it, because somebody is making some decisions on your behalf. And so go, I think it's helpful to have two or three or four different English Bibles and read how, well, how does this person say this? How does this one say this? And if you look at it, you go, well, why is there such a distinction here? Um, so I like the nineteen eighty-two NIV. Um, they, they changed it, or the nineteen, maybe it was before eighty-two. They changed it like in, was it like eighty-four? Or maybe it was a later, with two thousand eight, I think they changed it. No, I don't like that one as much as I like the original. There's an old OG NIV and then there's a new NIV. So, and it, and it's fascinating when you get to like, when you, so that's, that happens a lot when like Lutheran Bible translators, when they translate to like Spanish and they translate from one version of an English NIV. Now you're kinda a whole nother degree separated in that translation. And there's a whole nother set of decisions that have been made. Um, so it, it's just fascinating. Let's, let's, let's keep going, um,
So just a quick question, is he, is he telling us not to belabor the point in verse seven when he says, do not marvel that I said to you, most be born again?
I think, yeah, I think he's saying, um, don't, uh, this, this isn't that complicated. That's kinda how I, don't go, oh, how do I, you know, it's like, you know, you, you should know this. This is obvious. For a good Jewish person, the concept of being born again, uh, renewed, um, cleansed, um, all those concepts were, were well-known. And, uh, and this is just, he's just kinda interpreting all this and taking it another step for him. It's a concept that Nicodemus would recognize if he truly sat and thought about what he was saying. Um, verse eight is kinda the argument for the lowercase s. The wind blows where it wishes and you hear its sound, but you do not know where it comes from or where it goes. So it is with everyone who is born of the spirit. Um, just kind of a reference to, some people get it, some people don't, you know, kind of a thing. Um, verse nine, Nicodemus said to him, how can these things be? Jesus answered him. Are you, and so this is kinda going back to your point that you were saying earlier, David. You're a teacher of Israel and yet you do not understand these things? Meaning Jesus kinda saying, what I am saying is embedded in your faith and in your knowledge. Like, this isn't a new concept for you. Um, now, Nicodemus is hearing this in a whole new way. He knows the concept of regeneration, of renewal, of, uh, life coming again in the midst of death. He, he knows all these concepts. This is not a new concept. But he may not have ever heard it phrased as a being born again, right? Um, that may be a new concept. Um, so, so he's kinda saying, look, you should know these things. And again, he says, truly, truly, I say to you, now pay attention, he says, we speak of what we do not, or what we know and bear witness to what we have seen. Now again, go back to the signs. Nicodemus believes why? Now again, go back to the signs, Nicodemus believes why? Cause he's seen the signs. Um, but you do not receive our testimony. If I have told you earthly things and you not, do not believe, how can you believe if I tell you heavenly things? What are the earthly things that he told him? He told him flesh gives birth to flesh, spirit gives birth to the spirit, right? He's like, I told you plainly how this works and you're not believing it. Right, and so how are you gonna believe it if I tell you the heavenly things? No one has ascended into heaven except he who descended from heaven, that is the Son of Man. And again, is this an attestation, I would say yes. And as Moses lifted up the serpent in the wilderness, okay, what is that a reference to? Yeah, so um, we can turn to, that's in uh. Numbers, right, so we go to Numbers twenty-one. That is. That's a, that's an exhilarating book of the Bible, Bible, David says. Twenty-one, verses eight and nine, so you have this bronze serpent, right? And so you had these, these people were being bit by snakes and a lot of them were dying. And the people came to Moses and said, we have sinned, for we have spoken against the Lord and against you, pray to the Lord. That he takes away the serpents from us. So Moses prayed for the people. And the Lord said to Moses, make a fiery serpent and set it on a pole and everyone who is bitten, when he sees it, they'll live. So Moses made a ser- bronze serpent and set it on a pole, and if a serpent bit anyone, he would look at the bronze serpent and live. Kind of a crazy thought. They had a pandemic of snakes. And the answer was. Put a serpent on a pole and stick it up in the air and when they see it, they'll live. That's exactly right, we still have that on every hospital today. Um, I've even heard of a petition to try to get rid of it. Because it is such a religious um symbol. But uh, yeah, that's where we get the stake on the medical thing, that's where that comes from. So what Jesus, what is Jesus saying here by pointing to that? Yes, so he says, just like that snake was lifted up, he says, so must the Son of Man be lifted up. That whoever believes in him may have eternal life, why bring this up now?
It's it's not done a service by separating it with the title of the next section because it fits right into what.
Yes, and that's another thing with your English titles, section titles, sometimes it's better to ignore them, unless you're falling asleep and you play stop. But um, but it's sometimes it's better to ignore them.
Cause it flows right into.
Cause it flows right into it, but why is Jesus bringing this up now, you're exactly right, David. What does this have to be, to do with being born again, being born of the Spirit, um of uh. Um, of of everything that he he just spoke of?
The lives come through Jesus' Christ.
Yes. You wanna be born again? Turn to me, is what he's saying. So this whole discourse with Nicodemus is him saying, look. Salvation comes through me. If you want to find the Kingdom of God or enter the Kingdom of God, look at me. Turn to me, understand my love for you. Understand how my grace works. Does that make sense? I mean, it's it's him basically saying, look, I am God and I am here to bring salvation to the world.
That's probably one Nicodemus had a hard time understanding.
Yeah, and that's why, you know, Jesus is like, I'm telling you plainly, he's like huh, right, but but he keeps telling him and. And it's great, and so he continues on, okay, so the Son of Man must also be lifted up. So because God so loved the world that he gave his only son, that whoever believes in him, now it's said that Nicodemus believed. In Jesus, he saw the signs and he believed, right? Um, whoever believes in him should not perish. Should not perish, what would that be a reference to, the perishing? That would go right back to the snakes and the bitten, you know, and so, so just like those people would would not die when they looked at the. The the bronze snake, um, you will not die from your sins when you turn and believe in me. You will not perish, but you will have eternal life, for God did not send his son into the world to condemn the world. But in order that the world might be saved through him. Right? So again, remember what we talked about at the beginning with love? I mean, this is what we're referring to, right? Why would God not condemn us? This makes no sense. We deserve it. Well, the answer to that is what? Cause he loved us. Well, that doesn't make sense. But he does. And and it and it's a cool thought, again, to go full circle, to think that. That when it talks about him loving us, it's not cause he have to, it's because he genuinely does. But what about those who do not believe? Right, there's there's a dark side of this, whoever believes in is not condemned, but whoever does not believe is condemned already. I think it's interesting, it does not say what, it does not say whoever does not believe, God will condemn them. No, it says they'll get what they desire. Um, it reminds me a little bit of the Pharaoh in Exodus, there are times when the Pharaoh goes. Um, and and uh, or when Moses goes to Pharaoh, it says that, and God hardened his heart, but there's times where it says. Um, and it's very specific times, it says, and Pharaoh um hardened his own heart. And God just kinda left it alone. And one in specific would be the very last time, Pharaoh's heart, uh, he was hardened.
Yeah, I have a a friend who's um. Kinda feeling his way through the Christian faith, he's not new to it, but I think he's really starting to wanna grasp it and. And and is becoming a believer. And so he read a couple of things and he said, it almost sounds like we are predestined. And I said, boy, that's just one of the most complicated issues to tackle.
It really is, yeah.
And so I said, you know, we have free choice. God ultimately is God, will know the choice that we make, but he does leave it up to us. And I said, and other than that, it's just, you know, having the sitting side and not blowing.
It's one of those juxtaposed paradoxes that we carry with us, um, and and it's, it's a great lesson I love to teach. You you, you'll never figure it out, like you'll never walk away going, oh, I understand it now. Um, I don't understand it, you you have rules you have to follow when talking about it, though. When when I am saved, all glory be to God in my salvation. For God so loved the world, right, had nothing to do with me. But yet, when the one who does not believe. Now that's a condemnation I brought to myself. But wait. So think, think, use the analogy of a drowning person. And if a person is drowning. And they're literally going down. I reach down and I pull them up. Does that person go, well, it's a good thing I decided to let you do that? No, they, they say thank you, right, they say thank you. Um, now. If I reach down and he drowns, whose fault is it? It's not, it's not God's. This doesn't make sense, everybody understand that, this doesn't make sense. As soon as you get that it doesn't make sense, we're on the right track, so, yeah. Um, the the way you, the mysteries of God are left to be unsolved. And it's best that way. When we try to solve the mysteries of God, that's when we get ourselves in big trouble theologically. Um, and 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 a lot of theologians really have a hard time just leaving it alone. Um, so then you come up with doctrines that that our church body just flat rejects, like double predestination. Once saved, always saved, and um, those kinda things. Um, so. So um, it notes in verse eleven there, if you kinda jump back up. This is truly, truly, I said to you, we. If you do not, I'll skip, skip that, let's move on. Um, okay, let's go, um, we're on, where are we at, sorry, I got sidetracked here.
I think that's verse nineteen.
Nineteen, and this is the judgment. The light is coming to the world and people loved the darkness rather than the light, so this is, again, just further explaining those who do not believe. They love the darkness rather than the light, um. And because their works were evil. For everyone who did, does wicked works, uh wicked things hates the light and does not come to the light. Less this, his works should be exposed, but whoever does what is true comes to the light. So that it may be clearly seen that his works have been carried out in God. And so it's it's kinda interesting, he he ties in now. So you have belief and unbelief, for God so loved the world, where we have these, these great just gospel, gospel, gospel. But what is the evidence that we find here on earth to know if gospel is there or not? Well, it's our works and our deeds, so somebody who walks around and does nothing in line with following God, we would say what? Your works are testimony to your belief or to your unbelief. Right, and somebody, and it's not like we're gonna find a person and go, oh, well, you're certainly righteous. But but there are things we could do that we say, okay, there is evidence of faith. I'll give you an example where this plays out, you know, we preach a lot of sermons on in funerals, we preach a lot of funeral sermons. There are, we we learn this at seminary, there are two kinds of funeral sermons we preach, right? Because sometimes we preach a funeral sermon of someone that we know and love and have known and and just, we just know them, right? We know them very well. And in those funeral sermons, we can talk about what's called subjective justification, right, subjective justification. So meaning we can talk about the subject, the person, and we can talk about their life and we say, you know what, I knew. Joe, right, and Joe was a faithful man, I heard it from his lips. He spoke of faith, he lived out faith, I can show you the evidence of God's grace in his life, I can point to it. Right, he's not going, we we don't have confidence and comfort of his salvation because of those works. But those are evidence that he knew of God's grace, that's how we would say that, subjective justification, I can point to that. Sometimes somebody comes and they say, would you be willing to uh bury my loved one? Okay, sure, tell me about your loved one, well. Didn't, you know, I I don't know if God was there in his life, right? I I, in fact, I'm not sure he was a believer. Okay, so now what's the sermon? I can go and I can say, and and would this be good or bad or or encouraging or comforting or even endangering to? Those who are listening, if I go and I preach that sermon and I say, oh, Joe, he lived a wonderful life, and I talk about all the wonderful things he did, therefore we can be comforted that he's got salvation. Is that true? What do we just point to, we just pointed the fact that they're they're gonna be saved by how? By his works, can't preach that sermon, not for that Joe, the first Joe we can preach that sermon, we say, he knew his Lord's love. Cause we can draw it back to, it's always drawn back to, objective justification. So, but that doesn't mean you just leave him, I don't know where he's at, I mean, Joe, I mean, it's uh, you know, we would never preach that sermon either. What do we say? For God so loved, did God love Joe? Did God love both Joes? Did God love both Joes equally? Yes, and we point to that fact. God so loved Joe, whichever one he is. Um, and you just point to that. And and when we know that, we know how loving God is, that gives us hope and comfort in all situations. When I can't point to the direct evidence of faith, you point to God, you always draw it back to God, anyways. So that that concludes that, where are we at on time?
Seven fifty-four.
Seven fifty-four, okay, we're about, that that worked out well. Any just thoughts or questions, I'm gonna stop there, encourage you, please, um, read uh through the the rest he he here, um. You can go through uh chapters three and four, do your homework, I'm not gonna go, you know, we'll spend just the first ten minutes, you know, maybe. Talking about if y'all have any questions or do anything, do the homework, I think the homework is important, did you learn a lot doing the homework? I I hope that was good, um, real quick, I wanna just conclude, you, one of the questions I was brought up last time was about Gnosticism, I tried to read some on Gnosticism. Um, cause that's, it it is pretty. Well, uh, agreed upon that that was kinda who John was writing to or Gnostic influences. And there was some discussion about, um, is John's authorship or or recipients Jewish or Gentile? Uh, here's what I would say, the Gnostic faith or or heresy, I guess you would call it, does not come from a, from what I can read. Does not come from a Jewish founding, it comes from probably in its origins debate, or probably even a uh. Um, a Greek, um, but even before that, its origin may even go all the way out into the Asia area, which which uh. Doesn't surprise me because it it, some of it kinda smells of a. Hinduism Nirvana Buddhism kinda thing, but I don't know the connections there, but. But anyway, so so would come from, from a non-Jewish background, you would come from um probably more of a Greek. Uh, which is certainly considered a Gentile background. So who, I I've read that we're, and it it really raised its ugly head in Christianity. And and a lot of people thought that Christ was the knowledge that would, that he came to bring about that knowledge that brings salvation. Not that he himself earned salvation. Um, and uh, um. So some, I read one article that talked about how John writes to a mixed group of people. And so what's the clear answer, there's really not a good definitive clear answer, so. But uh, so is he writing to Jews or Greeks, I I think you could say the answer is yes. Um, but but Gnosticism, it really smells of of him trying to rebut uh the Gnostic understanding. And that's probably why he pointed to the fact that Jesus is God, period. Right, he's not here to reveal a secret knowledge, but he's here to. To be God, to do what God is here for.
Oh, I think I'm losing my mind, I just went and looked this week for that information.
Yeah?
And I knew it at the time and I didn't write it down.
No, you can't remember? I do that all the time. Well, and Brenda has a nice deal on it, and I don't know if Brenda, there's anything in there. Hinduism, okay. I didn't read that specifically, but it it sure smells of it. Yeah, mysticism, I, yeah, kind of. Place of, it almost reminds me of Nirvana, but. Yeah.
It compares it to um early Judaism and the Christian way.
Yeah, it compares the three faiths, um, early Judaism, Christianity and Gnosticism. Ri- right, yeah, transcendence is a word that are, that goes a lot with Gnosticism, the goal is that you literally transcend and. I used Plato, uh Plato, it's kind of a, that neo-Platonic understanding, you just kinda, you elevate yourself to a higher. Place of enlightenment or spirituality. So, um, if 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 we we, maybe we can scan that at some point and. So that was the only question I remembered needing to fulfill, thank you, appreciate it, thank you for being online, thank y'all for being here, I really do appreciate it. Um, um, I think, I hope it helps keeping everyone here and engaged that we're gonna do this just for five weeks, not, you know. On never-ending and and.
About the Exodus study.
Exodus study, a half a verse or chapter at a time, bless you, see y'all.